To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody. Um next meeting day, Wednesday, February fifth. Uh I believe that's probably the first we want to do the month, okay, we'll confirm that date then please.
I'll make a motion to confirm the next meeting date of February five, twenty twenty until Wednesday.
That motion's made in second, is it on my favor?
Aye aye.
Posen, okay, motion carries. Um I think what I'd like to do is uh see what kind of progress have we made on the concern between the developer and the residents, how that Cedar states. Um we have our own, the board has its own comments and concerns, um the other spokesperson for.
Yes.
Oh, the other spokesperson, okay.
Yes sir.
Uh there were a lot of concerns, but I think one of them had to do with the type of lighting, type of solar lighting, did that get resolved?
Uh well, the the there wasn't communication between, uh I thought this board and the lighting board, that was outside of our control, we have no idea where that was at.
Well, as I knew, there was gonna be discussion between the residents and uh Mr. Touch to see what kind of lights, there was no.
There was no meeting.
There was no meeting.
No meeting, okay, no discussion.
Well, we had, we had this, a discussion, we had a site visit.
Right, right.
Um but I don't really think we touched on the lights, I thought we were waiting for what the Dayton Light District would approve.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, last time we were here, Brian Dunn for the record with MBL Land Development and Management, last time we were here, we discussed uh placing solar lights as part of uh the subdivision and also uh we discussed with the lighting board, and they said, as long as it was up to you, as a planning board, as a, as, as a body, we'd be okay with that. We would place the solar lighting uh in, I think, three, three different locations, and then uh we would amend the HOA so that the homeowners association would be in charge of the light after they were installed, um and then I've, I, I think that there was.
The design of the light was up in question, was, what was the question?
Yeah, we were gonna look at whatever type of light that was appropriate for the residents, as well as, as you as the planning board, um and then, and, and go with that, and uh like I said, amend the HOA and be done with that, so there was supposed to be some discussion between the board here and the lighting commission, is regards to what we had said.
We're okay with the, we're okay with the locations.
Correct. Yep.
Am I wrong that our last discussion was, they were supposed to have a meeting and.
I, I absolutely agree with you. When you look at the minutes, I, I think I really.
And I, and if I, I wanna correct myself, it was gonna be in four locations.
Four.
One at Billy's and Cedar, one at Tommy's and Cedar, one at the uh, the intersection of Tommy and Billy's, and one at Sonny's.
Right.
It was five.
Five all together, five all together.
Yeah.
Five all together.
Okay.
And there was a conversation while we were doing this walk through, some of the um board members were there, uh we asked the question of, if you're looking at the plot plan, the intersection of Billy's and Cedar, and the intersection of Tommy's and Cedar, uh we asked if those can be on the, those can be tied into electrical, as opposed to being solar, cause they're on, they're on Cedar.
And there's also, there's, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's two poles there, already, two, two.
Right, yeah.
Two existing poles.
Two existing Verizon or National Grid poles that are already on those corners, so those could technically be Dayton Light Lit District, normal lights.
Right. Yes, I'm sure they are in that district.
Right, and then we would put in the remaining three inside.
Yes.
Is that lights on Cedar?
I don't think there's.
Yeah, um I think that you stop at Smith, I think you stop at Smith, I'm not sure.
I don't think there's lights on Cedar.
I don't know.
There's a couple, there's a couple.
I think there's, yeah, you stop at Smith, I think.
Up there then, there's no streetlights, right?
There's none, not towards Rehoboth, there's one right before the Rehoboth line, which I'm not sure if it's Dayton or Rehoboth.
Yeah, that's right on the corner, yeah.
Yep, um but then there's more towards um going towards Smith area. Further east, yeah.
Right, and then the end of Smith, there's that gap between you for Smith, or Smith doesn't where you guys.
So there's nothing between, there's nothing between Smith and.
Right, there's nothing, well, there's a whole vacant area.
I don't think you wanna get yourselves in the lighting district.
What's that, sir?
I don't believe you'd wanna get yourselves in the light district, well, powered lights, right?
Well, they're gonna have two powered lights, they just said that.
Yeah, but I, I agree. They have to be approved by the light district.
By the district, yes, and then where within the shadow of that light is gonna paint that light.
Yeah.
And.
So, so I've already committed to doing the five, whether, but I think what Jeff's question was, was are we allowed to put the solar light on the two poles? And if they say no, which I don't think we are, cause it's National Grid's pole, Horizon's pole, then the, the Dayton Light District could step in and put the lights on those poles.
No, I don't think you are, yeah. I don't think that's gonna happen.
And that was the, I think the question was.
I don't think that's gonna happen, I think you're gonna, if you're gonna be doing the five lights, I think they're gonna have to be on its own pole.
So be it.
Nearby, I, I really don't think, but again, it's uh, it's worth a try if, if you guys so want it.
Okay.
Wouldn't National Grid be involved in that?
Absolutely, they would have to.
So if they said that we could put them on that pole, then.
As long as they, when you get their, their approval, they, they should be ready to go, you probably had to petition them, um you know the paperwork, as you probably hear upstairs, there's a select, and so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would be new pole installation, you know, tying in, and then, you know, the select, when you give the approval, they have the pole put in the street, and then that's when we just do the thing, so.
So the only thing we were, we're gonna amend, as far as the lights go, is the lights will now fall under the HOA of Cedar states, and they'll also need to be, the single light will have to fall under the HOA of Wellington Estates, to be in, there, there in charge of the repairs.
I think, I know what you're gonna say, that's probably gonna be a matter out of our control with the HOA.
Mm-hmm. So, I guess what my question was, do you mean stands?
Up ahead, whatever you wanna do.
So, it's, the question, you said five lights, my understanding is that it'd be the two that are on Cedar, um Billy's and Tommy's, you got two there.
Yep.
Or have one at the intersection.
Yep.
Um and then the other light was inside of the other development.
I thought there was one at the cul-de-sac.
There is, there's one in the cul-de-sac, right?
Yeah, that is part of the other development, though, it's not ours, the grass area, the side is.
Uh, yeah, 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 yes, you are right, yes, yep.
Yeah, I think that's the other side.
So the only one that would be inside of ours would be the one at between lots, six by seven.
Correct. But if, if, if you're asking the, so those first two lights at the entrance weren't ever on the plan, we're doing those as a courtesy, so.
Yeah. It makes sense, cause especially the school, there's two bus stops right there, especially the high school kids, they're out there, and it's pitch black right now, so we appreciate it.
Yeah. So. I'll do them, but I'm not gonna be responsible for them.
So I guess, what are, the reason we were questioning about having electric on those poles, is if we have three lights in our development, and it's getting turned over to the homeowners association, what is the maintenance cost, and what's the life expectancy of those poles? I understand, I know they're very new, you, probably in the last five to eight years, you start seeing them pop up, what is the life expectancy, is it gonna cost the association a thousand dollars every five years to replace lights?
Fifteen years.
That's where you found out.
Is that.
When I even came up with it, when I came up with it, I looked.
Is what we'll do, we'll work together to figure out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I actually have, we, most of us have solar on the houses, we absolutely appreciate solar, but we're just trying to make sure we understand what the cost impact is to the residents.
Yeah.
My understanding was that these things were gonna be ironed out in between last meeting and this meeting, obviously they weren't. Um, you know, so let's try to get together again as the residents and yourself, and you know, choose a light that they like and move forward. Um, you know, we're, we're here addressing, I, I, it's really not petty stuff, and I didn't, I didn't understand where you're coming from, but um, you know, we should've been taken care of.
Um.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay, um how about other things that you wanted to address?
But, just, we'll talk about the lights, we'll work, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, right.
Nothing's gonna get done until spring anyway, so we'll work through that.
So some of the other items uh that we went through on, uh with, with, with the walkthrough when everybody showed up, uh there were some uh things that, I know, Joe, you mentioned you were gonna have the uh, the, the, the.
Lynch, Dan double, yeah.
Lynch company go through and look at some of the, some of the properties, and you, you texted me back and said that you'd identified a few that you were gonna have to come back and look at.
He did, I think it was four or five, I don't remember how many there was, but there were some of those driveways that we walked where they had, they left a lip, they're gonna heat that up and push that down.
Okay. Right.
That was one of our observations when we went out there on Monday.
Yep.
And Mr. Williams came with us.
Yeah, there's, I think there's four or five that are.
Uh we, yeah, we have a short list of things that, um, we were concerned about, and.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
My, my question is though, is why, I mean, GZA had an engineer on site, right, while they were putting the pavement down?
Yeah, we was out there.
Why weren't those questions raised at that time?
I think it, the, I think the biggest thing that is going on is that the sidewalk is lower than the street in a lot of places, and that I couldn't change at the time that you were putting down pavement, and true, I didn't bring, bring it up, but it's, it's, you know, after seeing it in place and with all the filling and everything, you can see that there's gonna be some drainage issues. That should be, you know, but it's gonna be, you know, safety problems within the future, so we, we do need to address those.
I'm gonna, well, that being said, I'll uh move on to just a moment, what we observed on uh Monday. Uh, two of the planning board members in GZA and the highway superintendent, highway department superintendent went. Uh handicap ramp at the southeast corner of Cedar and Billy's is too low, uh the water has no place to go, it's gonna pool up right there, and that's the one that's cracked from people running over.
Closest to it.
It's right at the corner of Cedar and Tommy's.
Okay, yeah, we got, yeah.
I think it'll worry that, it's, it's way too low.
Cedar and Tommy's.
Cedar and Tommy's.
Probably needs to come up four to six inches, but if you wanna fix the crack anyway.
All of this is gonna be put into some correspondence to me, right, Mr. Wood, it's expected?
Sure, um, I didn't realize it, but I guess the, the pad at the corner, where is it, which one? There are two, I didn't notice the other con's crap, the concrete sidewalk ramp being uh cracked, did you?
There is two of them.
Yeah, this is.
There's two of them that are cracked, and I, I will be the first one to admit that I had agreed with Joe
And they both.
So what.
That at the time that we, we originally meet there, that he could uh epoxy that, and unfortunately, this time around, we went out there, we noticed there was other issues, like there's a puddle of, that puddle's right in front of the, the handicap ramp, so they have, the only way that I see, and Tom, Tom can correct me on that, is to actually raise the whole thing and redo it, because otherwise they'll, you'll never get rid of that puddle there.
As, as long as, so I have no problem doing that, if it's not correct, we'll fix it, it's not an issue, but if it gets ran over on Thursday and I do it on Wednesday, I, I can't do it again, you know, it, it's.
Okay.
That's.
I think it's mostly contractor vehicles that are doing it.
Well, it is, there's, somebody's building a pool out back, and they keep driving through the island when they leave, you know, and Norman witnessed it today, and it's.
Yeah, I, I go through there four times a week.
You know, it, it's um, putting that island in there, we disagreed, that it was a terrible idea, when, you know, we connected the two subdivisions, but the board wanted it, the residents wanted it, and it's going to be a problem for them.
Oh, it is, it's awfully tight, we've driven it, it's very tight.
It's.
I don't like it myself, but.
It, it serves the, it serves the purpose, it serves the correct purpose.
What am I gonna say?
Maybe if it was smaller, but.
Yeah, we, we built it as it was drawn up, you know, and, and, and it, it serves the purpose, but it's, 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 if a tractor trailer has to get in there, it's, it's going to run over the corner every time.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I can't. Right.
And, you know, there's nothing I can do about that now, we built it per the plan.
Joe, actually, I have to ask clar- clarify a question on that, the cement pads that you're just talking about are on Cedar and Tommy's, and then on Billy's connecting with um, uh Tommy's.
Sonny's or Tommy's?
Tommy's.
Yep.
So that, those are the pads that we're talking about, that people are driving over, it's not the roundabout that has anything to do with it?
Well, but, but I, I, I segue into.
So, so on the roundabout, though, they've already had all the Dayton fire trucks come through, and not one of them drove over anything coming through there, and the school buses do it.
Well, because it's, it's, that's, well, they, cause they care.
It's the driver.
It's a.
Oh, no, no, trust me, I get it, but, but we also have.
Exactly. With all due respect, you're talking to somebody that operates a hundred tractor trailers, right?
Yep, no, not in cracking that, so I was confused when you were talking about the cement pads.
No, 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 I segue onto that, to that, because what's happening is the, the truck traffic that's going into the back right now to, to build the pool, Norman witnessed
Going to that.
Them driving through the island, and then taking that corner, either two shot coming in or two shot going out, and I just, my only thing is, I have no issue, you guys know us, we have no issue going back and fixing a mistake, it's not a problem whatsoever, we'll do it all the time, but I can't keep being responsible for it, so, you know.
I know that I went through on last Friday, and you're talking about people, you know, parking vehicles and that type of thing, I saw two V trucks that were in there, and on Tommy's Way, they were parked right on top of the berm. They went straight on the berm, they were parked on top of the berm.
Take a look, if you had noticed, inside on that grass strip, there's more rats in the grass strip than in a dirt bike track.
It, it, it.
It's just, it's, you, you can't control it, you just, you can't, you know, um, I was looking through, I, I don't wanna jump ahead of Mr. Cabal, but I was looking through that um, we still have the other issue of sun, unsafe driving speed in district of stop things, that's a question of, the residents need to contact the police department, if they have to have a patrol up there to watch the residents fly in and out of it, and.
They have, have. So there's, there's a, there's a bit of a legal.
You know.
Still a private way, though.
It's, it's.
Correct, it's still a private way, and it's.
It, it, it. It is a legal problem with that, where I guess the police can't actually.
Enforce.
Yes.
Because it's not been, except the street yet, but here's my question, in regards to that, Joe, I'm sorry to cut you off, is that, who put the stop sign that says twenty miles an hour, that's a legality issue, I don't know what, who put the stop sign up?
It's not accepted yet, so. I don't think.
I'm sorry, a, a, a speed sign, a speed sign of twenty miles per hour within the development.
What's the stop sign? Stop, stop. Uh, the planning board did.
I proved the speed sign.
The planning board.
That was discussed years ago.
Yeah, that was with uh.
At the time, then we did the speed bumps.
I'm surprised that was allowed prior to the acceptance of a road.
Well, we did the, we.
It was, it was per the residents' request, and a, a speed limit sign go up, and then after we discussed it with the planning board, we, we settled on twenty. I threw out twenty, thinking they'd come back and say twenty-five, thirty, and the twenties went out, I said fantastic.
I think everybody was making an effort to try to control traffic speed.
Right, right.
We did the speed bumps as well.
Some of it is probably not legal, but you know what, if it does the job, and until somebody uh finds us or brings us to court,
Mm-hmm.
it's gonna stay twenty miles an hour until this gets resolved.
I put in the signs, for twenty miles an hour, because it was requested by the homeowners.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Put in the speed bumps, it was requested by the, but it's, it's kinda hard, because some wanted it, then once I put them in, they were complaining about the speed bumps.
So there, is, there's two.
That was a few, few people complained, we appreciate it a hundred percent.
Yeah.
There's only a few here, so. The other few, the other few.
Yeah, I, I did a couple more things.
All right, let's.
Um, you're aware of the sidewalk issue, I would say better than fifty percent of the subdivision, both Sonny's, Billy's and Tommy's are, the sidewalk is too low.
Are you, I really have to see that in person to agree to that, I mean.
Yeah, the berm is higher than the sidewalk, there's nowhere for the water to go. Um, you know, the solution is to raise the sidewalk unless your engineer has a different solution.
We'll have to look, I think between Peter and, and Brian, they can work out something that makes sense.
Okay.
Yes.
Removing and replacing.
I think there's a couple, you know, there could be a couple different options, and, and they differ at each location, but we can try to get the, we'll get the drainage to work.
Yeah. Right. Hmm.
The driveways that I, I observed on Sonny's Way, that you were talking about, the slopes of the driveway and the contours, right?
So the, there's two issues with the driveways that I'm aware of, is obviously the way the car pulls in and it has to go up the hill, that is what it is, there's no re, way for me to change that. Where I'm talking about is the gutter line being a little proud of finished asphalt, that's what Lynch is gonna come back and fix. I don't think that there's any issue with the way that the truck, the car pulls into the driveway and has to go up, I mean, Rob, you have this, that issue in, in your yard, not the, the, not the, not the gutter being proud of the road, but you have to go uphill pretty drastically.
Yeah. Yeah, she, that woman that lives there, um, just a very steep, short, steep driveway, where mine's a lot longer, so the grade is not as steep, but yes, I don't know.
You know, I, the driveway, if the contour at the end is, you know, relatively small, uh it slopes down evenly, but some of them they go up like at a, maybe a thirty degree angle, and then they start to contour, I noticed that on a half a dozen driveways, maybe five.
So I follow a grading plan, I follow the grades that I was given on the plan, you know, it, it, and I, and, you know, keep in mind, I didn't build fifteen of those. Long built did, so that, and I have to know which ones you're talking about, and we'll, we'll work through it.
Yes, let's see if you can, I was surprised, actually, that they're not bottoming it out when they, when they first hit their, their driveway.
Yep.
Every driveway that was put in by us, I drove to make sure, because the vehicle I had at the time was low and had a spoiler in the front. Every single driveway, I drove before it was even asphalted, to make sure that you wouldn't bottom out, there was one when they put in the binder of Long Built, they bottomed out, uh we took care of it, we re, regraded the whole driveway, everyone.
Do you know what?
Uh, I think the worst one was one twenty-two, maybe.
So that would be the, the top of the subdivision.
Right on the.
To the left of the.
When you come up to the uh roundabout.
Do you want the plant, I have the plant.
We have one here.
Oh, and you take a right onto Sonny's?
They're not with that number though.
After the roundabout.
Yeah.
One twenty-two.
Probably.
Put, put it in, in that letter to me, and we'll look, we'll definitely.
Okay, some aren't too bad, you know, I don't know if you're getting complaints, we haven't gotten any, but.
Mm-hmm. No. No, I think after what the people have been through there over the past six years, I think everybody's happy that the construction stopped.
Well, let me say, I think they're making good progress, I, I think, just, you know, little conversation, dialogue gets you a long way, so, um, yeah, but we'll do that.
Can I, to the, can I just mention two things, there's two driveways when we were out there, I think one was on Tommy's, where it looked like someone else had put in the driveway after all these were done,
Yes.
and they raised the height over the sidewalk, so now there's like a lickers, you know, and where the driveway crosses the sidewalk.
Yeah, again, Peter, I, it's hard for me to know which one, if you guys just.
Yeah, you know what's, you know what's funny about that, is the same company that paved all the roads, though, immediately went and did his driveway, so you'd think after paving the road, they would've.
So, I brought Lynch, I mean, everybody's aware.
It was Lynch that did his driveway.
J H Lynch is not, you know, Bobby the paving.
No, fly by night.
He did, did miles and miles and miles of highways, so Peter, Lynch came down, one of the owners of the company, walked the subdivision with myself and Norman, I think. Uh, and I think somebody else was there with me, I'm not sure who, but, and we, he knows that they have to come back in the s- spring and address some of the issues, I don't remember which ones they were, but there are some that he had, that they are, have agreed to come back and, and, and fix, why they did what they did, Peter, in three sections like that, I, I, I don't know.
Okay, and, and the other one is the one on.
That's, that's lot eighteen.
Yeah, they.
Right.
Okay.
That's.
On Sonny's.
Tommy's.
Tommy's.
Street you come through.
The other one, um, is the one on Billy's Way, coming in, the fir, the driveway that was left open.
Unpaved.
Unpaved.
Yep.
Now they've placed, it appears to be a binder for the driveway, which in the binder is already above the height of the sidewalk in that area.
And, yeah, that, that, we didn't bind to that, didn't.
I know, I know you didn't, so something has to, someone has to, are they.
Yeah, they. Yeah.
It's the realtor, I believe, that's doing that.
That's uh lot seventeen.
That's the corner, right, first one on the left.
That's the Ferreras.
Yeah, the first one.
Yeah.
This one's up, it's the Ferreras.
It looks like it's a new for a company or something like that, they have a lot of trucks that, and they're packing all over the playing thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
The green house, house, they're trying to flip the house, the, the owners, I guess, were in some medical problems, they had to, they were gonna go bankrupt or something before it dawned, you know.
Oh, okay. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's the first one on the left as you come into.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Billy's.
Uh, not the Ferreras on the right, it's the first one on the left, I know what you're talking about, that was like one of the very first Formay lots.
No.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So that's not in the subdivision, but he's tying into your road, is that not in the subdivision?
He's not a, he's not.
It's a Formay.
A Formay, okay.
I'm sure I'm responsible for the sidewalk portion of it, but he's not part of their HOA.
Right, so you should, or someone from your company should talk to him about what you're doing to the sidewalk, before he pays.
I mean, he, he.
This is the house that originally had the fence on the right of Rock Street.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
I, I haven't been, I, when I go into the subdivision, I actually go in through Tommy's, I don't go Billy's, so I wouldn't have, I'd never even noticed that.
Yeah, that would've been, in the walkthrough, even when I didn't have a sidewalk.
Yeah, it was.
But that, that driveway there was paved, gone, if you're walking on the sidewalk, it, the, the pavement is so much higher than, than the sidewalk, that it, Tom actually, yeah, that looked at, when he looked at, he said, that's a trip hazard right there, so it's.
That specific one is one of the pictures that we provided before, that's the one across the street in diagonal, on the other side of Dell's property.
No, that's the second, second one on the right hand side.
No, we didn't be caught on the two. Yeah, exactly.
Is it Tommy's or first street?
No, Billy's, Billy's. But it's right on the other side of Dell's property, it's the one.
No, 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 not the one, it's after Dell's property.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's the one after then.
Okay.
That is the one, you're right.
The one after Dell, oh, on Cedar, after Dell, yes.
No, not on Cedar, on Billy's. Lot sixteen. Lot sixteen, where the leaching field is or whatever, the drainage field.
Yeah, right after the leaching field is the one with the, the driveway, right, and then there's one with the driveway, that's the one that Tom actually addressed, that is.
Yeah.
That's the Ferreras.
Correct.
Only one with Tommy's.
So you, there's no sidewalks on that side? Uh.
No.
On the lot sixteen side?
No, it's where they paved, it's where the road was paved, and it drops down to the, nothing on it, so.
No.
So we're talking two different things.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we got, we gotta see these, that, you know, Peter and I need to, to take a walk and.
Right. That's the best.
Agree to, agree to agree on what we're gonna do.
Do you have anything else?
I know, that's simple enough.
Uh, not much, how do you feel about a, a sign for the roundabout?
We had him made.
Yeah, it's a lot of.
Yep.
People, right?
Okay, good.
It's actually the one that looks like a.
Roundabout?
With the arrows, yeah, and one's gonna go on, one's gonna go on the side entering, and one will go on the side leaving, so there'll be two.
And what are we gonna have?
I thought it was a, a, a di- a diamond with the reflectors on it.
It's a diamond. Yeah, with the circle.
No, it's a circle.
That's the one you'll be doing.
Well, we might have talked about that, but when we were up there the other day, something with keeping the traffic right, I don't know.
Okay, signs to keep right, mm-hmm.
Joe, is it possible, I hear putting those reflectors up there because cars were going in there and getting stuck, so those st- the snow markers with the reflectors, I put those out there just cause people were hitting them all the time, trying.
I think we do something, uh.
Something, something else that they visual.
There's, there's plantings, there's plantings that go in it.
Okay.
In the spring, but.
It's just, you know, what, you know what I'd like to put on that island?
A Mount Everest?
Boulders.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, we would love that.
Yeah, but then, someone's gonna get killed up there.
Yeah. Yeah, but.
Um.
I think we oughta put reflectors up like the end of, uh.
I think not the island.
Forest, forest tree mark, you ever travel forest at night?
I like kinda like what you're thinking.
Well, we'll do.
I would, if I, I would try, we should try to follow the, the standard set by the state for rotaries, and put the signs that the state uses.
Correct.
That's what I thought we ordered today, but I guess that could change, so.
Okay. Yeah, we should, we should have standard signs, so people see it at other places, see it here, and know what's going on.
The, with, with the arrows. Mm-hmm.
The only other thing was vegetation on the circle, with the plants up.
That's, it's springtime, that's getting addressed.
Yeah, you know, I'm looking at when this pretty much came to a head, which was mid-November, and considering the time of the year it was, I think there's been a lot of progress made uh on all sides, and I don't know how happy people are, but, um, you know, I'm, I'm hoping it can be settled uh in a reasonable manner, and everybody's happy.
Yeah.
We've always had a good working relationship with Jeff, you know, especially, I've really dealt with a lot of the other guys, but this, the letter to you guys took me by surprise, you know, and that's kinda why You know, and that's kinda why I kinda went on defensive initially, but you know, I was respectful and just explained my position and I still hold these positions. You know, I I don't believe that I'm responsible for some of the things that initially you guys wanted done, but I think you got those issues were already addressed, so. We know what we have to work through and you know, I'm not gonna let you guys down, so.
Can I bring up one more thing that um we were talking about drainage earlier, your concern with uh the handicap pads and and water sitting along the front. Also in the corner of of Cedar and um and Tommy's, this is something you've probably seen this coming in. Uh, there's an ice dam that collects on the on the right side when you go out to Cedar, and again, that's that's the.
Cedar and Tommy's.
Cedar and Tommy's, uh and it's a concern because if you look at where the the water comes behind lot number two, which is the the Ramos family. Water comes down here and runs up Cedar, I'm sorry, lot number one, runs behind the properties, goes along Cedar on Ramos's property. And then it dumps into Cedar, it dumps into Tommy's on its way to that storm drain. And because the road dips down a little bit, it doesn't all clear out, and you get a huge ice sheet going through the ditches.
So the water's not getting.
It was.
Again, there was a conversation between Jimmy and uh Tommy about.
Yeah.
On.
So it's a picture looking from Tommy's to Cedar.
The town wanting to connect.
Yeah.
It's all ice.
Cedar Street to that catch basin.
Yeah, I would.
And it's it hasn't been.
Yeah.
Let me just see this for a second.
Not as long yet.
Yeah, so we thought once the road got paved, it would have been straightened out, but we realized this in the in the last, well, it's been worn lately, so we haven't seen the water come out.
My question, you were considering.
But uh when when it when it does rain, it's it's a it's a river.
It's a river.
And then when it gets colder, you gotta pay ice sheet.
So we didn't glance on the works.
Coming down, coming down Cedar Street.
Right.
Circle on.
We we made the connection from the catch basins all the way down to pass West up, putting another catch basin.
The problem is the westmost spot, almost almost slid in the Cedar. It's like, pretty big.
Going from here.
Uh, I'm.
I know what's going on.
I'm on lot sixteen, I'm on Sunny's way.
All right, Sunny's up.
And um I have a lot of water issue in the ground groundwater, because there's no control over it, I understand that. But I have no place to dump my uh water from the sun pot, so I just dump it off the side of the house and it runs down to the to the street. And then, can I show you this? And then it freezes.
Well, the water coming from the house.
The water freezes, no, 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 this is this is from my draining down the yard, and then it freezes onto the street.
There is catch basins.
Oh, yeah.
You you.
So it goes over the handicap and it's all ice and it runs over and there's a huge dam in front of my neighbor's yard. And it's just constant groundwater, and I would love to have it dumped into my backwoods like everybody else does, but I have so much water back there when it rains, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, we have the.
And the water, there's no way to put the water.
Can I see that picture?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have some regulations now where it it's actually gonna be, it is illegal.
That's coming up, this house right here.
To uh dump water on and end up in the roadway and freeze out.
It runs down in and it just goes up like.
It becomes a safety matter.
So there's isn't there catch basins on this side?
Yes, but with the cold weather.
Further down, right?
I get so much water from wherever it's coming from, they can't keep up.
But didn't 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 Long Bill, because Long Bill didn't.
They did a swell.
Come this way.
Yes, but it's it's better than it was originally, but it's still an issue.
Alright.
And it's.
Something I need to look at.
Pretty bad, I actually, they actually told me that they're not responsible for the land anymore, you guys are not, imagine that.
One night.
Because I um ended up having kind of basement come.
Any other comments from the board?
No, seriously, should we just uh? Okay. If you could, I suggest that if you uh email that picture to the board so that we can at least look at it and see while we're out there. Um, and uh any other things? Let's see, oh, the you had the concern with the flayed end outlet on Tommy's Way? Um, the drainage that was in your letter?
Which is there.
Okay.
Yep.
That is acceptable, it has a very small crack in it, that can be repaired, that can be, but it is a it that type of a um flayed end outlet works very well. And it it's looks it's looks like it's properly installed and everything and functioning, so I wouldn't change that.
Yeah, I I I don't doubt, I don't doubt that, but I find it interesting that the all the outlets, right, um are done differently.
Okay.
Um, I'm not, I can't speak to the technicalities of it, but there's no other outlet within the development that looks like that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So as as was explained when we did the walkthrough, all the inlets are concrete, all the outlets are plastic.
Correct. Yes. Correct.
So so I I got down there and looked and it looked fine.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz I I got down there, we 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 jumped in there, uh and I I looked all around it and it looked okay.
That's what that's what we discussed during the on the on site.
Okay.
Yeah.
I I just.
You have to think about the wa- the water flow coming in, you don't need rip rip wrap, you need just need a way of conveying it into the pipe on the other side.
Trying to make sure that this was covered.
Yeah.
It can be plastic with the rip wrap, that's the normal drainage system.
On Perry, you have anything to add to our conversation here?
Oh, I we only had two structures that look may need to be adjusted in the center of the road, but other than that, that'll cover you all in your notes that you're sending over.
Are they two all time?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was two catch bases, yeah, construction.
Quiet, maybe low, yeah.
On on Sunny's Way.
The others are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I noticed those.
The others are nice and low, so the problem grabbing, but there's two in particular that are pretty a bump in the night.
They back right.
Yeah, let's just raise it, raise the grade and be all set.
Yep.
Yeah, as far as the go back to the lighting, we're we're good with whatever kind of lighting you wanna put up there, it's just that. I think since our last meeting, there was supposed to be some uh communication of what style we're gonna put up. Other than that, I think you guys are making great progress and it's it's much better for you to work together than I think in this forum.
I'd like to suggest that we're just to tie in hot wiring to Cedar Street, contact the Dyson Electric Light District, get on their agenda. And see what their procedures are and what they do, because as again, you know, we're we don't have a problem with solar and the questions tying in how the hot line on Cedar Street, so.
I do think that that's the best case scenario for those two lights if we're gonna go on a pole, I don't believe they're gonna let us go to the pole.
Fixed, yeah.
I don't got some, so.
I I just wanna ask another question, a question about the did a light pole appear face that's set way back?
So that that's that's part of that, you remember, gonna have to dig deep. That whole subdivision before we took it over shifted five feet towards uh Williams Street.
Right.
And that, for whatever reason, was put in, it's in the wrong spot, has to be removed.
Has to be.
That's why some of the fire hydrants too are so close to the road on the right side, is why it was moved, who who like, we didn't move it.
I think it was the ledgership at the time.
Yeah, I never hit any ledge there.
Yeah, not even doing test tests, no ledge.
Yeah.
Did they, for whatever reason, that's why that uh light post is floating in the middle.
Cause one of us. Okay, so that's gonna be, okay, fine.
Yes.
Dell had some issues with that, or utilized.
And and I know that you're trying.
We can still utilize it though, correct?
I know you're trying to move to getting closing out this project and everything, so the things I'm gonna be looking for is are are you installing all the bams?
Yes, we're we're in the process of doing that, most of them are in, I think we have a few more iron rods for the rear of the property, but that's it, that's another thing, glad you brought that up. So that um everybody knows our surveyors will be coming up there every once in a while on the property, excuse me, gentlemen, you need to hear this.
Yep.
So I don't want you to be kicking them off the property, it's part of the subdivision uh rec- uh approval. That we have to put iron rods at all of the corners of the property lines for the subdivision.
You guys got letters, right?
And then we have to bound, we have to bound the right of way.
Yeah, we get we get a letter with the mail saying that you're always gonna come by and to to be aware that you're gonna be present.
Yeah, so that so that you wouldn't, you know, tell the surveyors to get off the.
If you wouldn't, in the back.
Modern, modern, this is in Sunny's, on this is only on Cedar Cedar's uh Cedar State subdivision.
Okay.
Okay, alright.
Okay?
Yeah, we get the letters back in November from the engineering company.
Yes, that's us.
And they also, they've also tried to talk to us, you guys that were out there doing the work.
Yeah, I told them to knock on the doors, make sure that you knew what they you they were doing, so that you didn't, you know, kick them off or anything like that.
Mm-hmm.
So it's really to your benefit, that your property is gonna be bounded, all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
It's part of the subdivision approval.
Okay.
Yeah, and and you're also working on the um Asbilly plans, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
We've we've started the Asbilly plans, uh we've done the final topo on the the pavement that's out there and the sidewalks. But I in the areas they're gonna might be adjusted now, so we're.
Yeah, it it might be helpful too to see that topo in the sidewalk.
Okay.
You know, to s- to see that information, I think that would be very helpful in rectifying some of these issues. Um, and the other thing is I I think we're gonna need some sort of inspection of the infiltration basin. Uh, to make sure that it hasn't been, you know, uh filled with silt during construction. So we'll have to arrange for that, just to make sure and see if it has to be cleaned before it's turned over to the homeowners. And that's typical, you 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 do a final cleaning of all structures too before you turn it over.
Yeah, we'll normally do that.
Yeah, but I they they, I don't know how the erosion control works there and all that construction over there, that's the issue with the with the ground bases.
You know, that you mean, that was even, that predates my tenure.
Oh, I know, I know.
Right, yeah, that's been.
So I mean, that was installed line before I even got involved, Peter, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll look at the whatever manhole structures are in there and and make sure that, you know, nothing is uh.
I I'd like to be there when you do the inspections of that, so we can just, you know, put some cameras down there, take some pictures and just make sure it's not a total mess down there.
Sure. Yeah.
My only request would be uh just a letter from the planning board addressing all of these things, so it's we're we're all working from one document and we can take.
I was just gonna mention that, it's a touch that our administrative assistant will pay the proper paperwork to get to you and your engineers and also to the homeowners, so that way they know what's gonna happen, so.
Prior to that, if Peter and Brian could assemble that list.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I've been taking pretty good notes here, Carrie, I can share some of this with you, I can share the whole document with you. And then get a get a list from you, uh you know, whatever letterhead from the planning board, these are the things that we have to do and start checking them off. Okay?
Everything seems.
It's like a punch, so we can prepare a punch list.
Yeah, it's like a punch list.
Yes, everything to me seems to be stuff that needs to be done that would have been caught and done at your final inspection anyway, so.
Right. Right.
A lot of this is just uh, I think everybody thought that we were going for approval now and gonna move this into a accepted road, and it really wasn't at that stage yet, so.
One one more question.
Can we keep this picture for the board?
Okay.
Okay, curious where that was left off, I know we we talked about the drainage and at the top it was brought up on Sunny's, so.
Yeah. I I I think that that's, I think that that needs to be addressed in Cedar Street and connected to the drainage that goes down Cedar Street, which is what is how it was left.
See, I think that's actually a plan B because something happened behind that red house, the water's not making it to the ditch to the north of that red house.
So did somebody do, did the homeowner may have done something?
Possibly, possibly, so the plan A would be try to address that, cuz if you can stop the water from getting to Cedar Street, everyone's good.
Right.
Are you saying this is occurring because of the the some work done on 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 the houses on the, I guess, the west side of Tommy's Way? That something was done in the back along there?
Poss- possibly, and there used to be a pipe under his driveway that's not not there no more also, that's contributing to that. So the driveway's kicking in on Cedar, you know, scrapping around.
Could you possibly come out when we do this site visit?
More than happy to.
Okay, I appreciate it.
So when this is all said and done and it's handed over to the Homeover Owner Association, what's the process with that, how much it's gonna cost? I've heard we might owe back money or something.
That's between you and the developer, that has nothing to do with the planning board, so that's that's a se- a completely separate si- situation.
Okay, yeah.
And uh that's between you and their attorneys.
Could I address it just quickly?
Sure.
So um it's been a little bit challenging to try and get everybody mailed because the Dyson G I S system isn't working, does anybody know about that?
Yeah, we're doing um.
We're getting a new system.
You shouldn't.
Yeah.
You should just leave Dyson G I S, MAP G O long, cuz all the other ones are not good.
Yeah. We um we, yeah, that was up to the assessor's office, unfortunately, yes.
So that's that stopped us from being able to actually compile the new mailing list, we don't know who the homeowners are, I only have twelve, Long Bill's got fifteen.
I could I I I can send you the Oliver page, which works pretty good.
That's one of them, Oliver.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't, we don't find that as up to date.
Yeah, that's what we've been. Yeah, it's not true.
You know, it's.
Yeah, I think some of it too is like it was convenient with our G I S, you have the property cards, we have the counters, and I think we can get that on Oliver.
No, you're not.
Or it's not current, and it's very old.
Not except.
We can drop, we'll, we need to explain to everybody what has to happen, we're not gonna go back to day one, if you've been there for ten years, we're not gonna ask you to. You owe four thousand dollars, you know what I mean, we're gonna be conservative with it and respectful to everybody, but the the account has to be funded. And if there have been people there for two or three years, that tho- those HOA fees should have been paid into the account, I can't use it, but they should have been paid into that account.
Okay, Mr. Perry?
Yeah, I'd love the G I S comment, I I believe in the interim, my assessor's office would assist Joey, their company, the proper list that needs to be done.
Yeah, I don't know who the new company is yet, cuz we've been using all of them.
The assess- the assessors office.
Let them do it.
The assessors office is instrumental in the new company anyways, so they're the ones that are processing that information that you're seeking.
Got it, okay, yeah, we can go that route, that's fine. I'm willing to work with you guys on it, we can we can work through it, but I I don't get the money, the money's only going into the account to benefit you guys, the money doesn't come to me. So if if you guys fund it with twenty-two thousand dollars, I don't get the twenty-two thousand dollars, when I turn you over the checking account, you keep the twenty-two thousand.
Right.
It's for your protection, to there could be things to do right away, you know, that we're gonna address a lot of it, but um you you wanna have the money in there.
Yeah, I just didn't know like the impact, especially with solar lights and those sort of things, how that was gonna impact everything.
So you your responsibilities is in Cedar, it's a whole different set of responsibilities out back, so please don't confuse the two.
No, I I agree.
Um, Cedar is is pretty much just the the main middle drainage swale, uh uh I think you have to mow that twice a year. And then now we've added the lights, so there's not a significant amount of work to do, you're gonna.
And and the detention basis. There's some, the underground infiltration system.
The one that's on lot sixteen?
Yeah.
On the other side, I don't know what responsibilities they would have to that, though, if it's.
Part of the internal drainage system.
Exactly.
Okay, but it's not the mowing of the top of it, cuz it's an easement on lot sixteen, so the.
Yeah, I guess not, but make sure that someone's not planting trees there or.
There'll there'll homeowners are aware of that, they they know they can't, they know that they can utilize the space, they can't put anything on top of it.
No pools.
No pools. No pools.
Playground for the kids.
Without driving anything into the ground.
I guess we're good.
Oh, can I do something quickly? I I I apologize for being late, it's coming from work, um, I think this was already addressed by Joel on email, but I just wanted to be on the record. Uh, when um the sidewalk was being taken care of, there, I'm on lot eighteen, uh, there's a bunch of my sprinkler heads that were broken, I tried to fix some of them. But I'm realizing there's a ton of um sprinklers that needs to be fixed, as well as um holes on some of my piping right in front of that. He on email has agreed to take care of it, but I just wanted to be on the record to be sure that uh that that's.
Read your name, please, sure, full name.
Uh, Christopher's my first name, and the last name I'll spell for you is I, S is in Sam, I, D is in Boy, O R.
And what is your address?
Um, twenty-one oh seven Tommy's Way.
Second on the right, if you commit.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm pretty confident that after tonight's meeting, um substantial amount of things, if not all, will be addressed, so. Yeah, as I said before, I think under the circumstances, it's come together pretty well, so it's uh. We'd like to see before we send the final uh punch list to the Loops Company, let's let Jeff and his neighbors look at it, just to make sure you're satisfied. But what we're gonna be asking them to do, so we don't have to keep coming back over and over.
Okay, good idea.
I think after this, Peter should just be the one to check it off and say.
Right, after we compile the list, have Jeff look at it, you guys agree with Jeff looking at it?
Good.
And then we'll send it to you, I think that's the best way, because you know, if we send it to you and they say, what about Jeff, then we gotta do this all.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
What is the email start to send that picture?
For me?
I'll get to my card.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, um.
Now, we have.
Thank you to people living in development, also to the Loops Companies for coming out.
We want a copy of the one we already have.
Yeah, cuz I wanted to talk.
Have a good day.
Good seeing you.
You never felt anything like that.
Thank you very much.
Good.
Peter, I'll call you and we'll set up a date.
Okay, I'm I'm not gonna be available for like many of my vacations, so.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
He's overpaid, that's why he pays so many taxes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Be a town whore.
I don't know if speed dial, not yet?
I know.
Oh, thanks.
Alright, that's great.
Thanks, thanks so much.
Very busy, buddy.
Other is?
Yeah.
Take care, good seeing you.
No problem.
Take care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, much to meet you.
How do I get the list? Thank you.
See you, man, take care. Uh, P C D one electronic copy of that other picture you guys saw.
Yeah, you have mine.
You weren't dealing that good after that.
Be serious.
Yeah, it's absolutely serious.
That I think.
Mono.
I haven't had any.
Oh, you're joking.
I know.
Hey, Jeff.
No, brown cord bee.
Bee, that's it?
Bee, yes, brown young bee.
Yeah.
I know, I know, I know.
Robert, I don't usually, so, this is maybe so formal, isn't it?
I don't know if it's easier for me to just, it's up to you, it's up to the board, but I have easel with a color plan that I can put on presentation or just lay it out in front of you, whatever is easier.
Who wants to see it all?
No problem. No problem.
How many, Mr. Robert? Must see it as always.
I'm giving this a wetland.
So. Tell me, babe, ain't got any.
It's a nice name for us.
Um, ju- just for the record, uh, my name's Niall Zager from Zenith Consulting Engineers. And, um, so Tony, uh, Tony had asked me to come in and just, um, just informally discuss the project and see, uh, get any input from the board. Um, cause I don't know if, I don't believe that there's been many, if more than a couple in town, uh, conservation subdivisions. So I think it's more, do you feel as though this is a good fit for the property, um, you know, is this something that the board is gonna be, uh, you know, in favor of? Uh, obviously we have a lot more work to do, but just informally, just the conceptual plan for you to take a look at, so. Um, right now, this is, it's actually seventeen twenty-seven William Street and, uh, the, the house is actually a form A lot that was, uh, created. Uh, back about three, four years ago or so.
Six years, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, it was a form A that was, uh, approved by the board and a house built on that. And the rest of this area here is all field, um, and then this, this green area here is the actual wetland area. Okay, that, what this, this is actually the, uh, result of a property line survey, um, and the wetlands shown are actually, what, uh, were flagged by, um, LSC, Lisa Calendonia. Um, uh, you know, went out there, delineated the wetland, so what you see is in- inaccurate depiction of what is out there, um.
Did you say Lisa Caladonia?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a conservation.
Around your time.
Around your time.
Oh, so she done this recently?
Sure, within the last month or two.
Oh, really?
Oh, no kidding.
Yes.
Oh, no kidding.
Yep, she was actually with us on another project in town, uh, in front of conservation and she'll be the one helping us on this one as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, um, so basically the requirement, and if I'm boring you with any too much information, stop me, but it's a minimum seventy-five hundred square feet, uh, lot. We're providing over that, just for the sheer fact of trying to make it buildable enough, um, forty foot wide layout. What we've done is we're, we're actually showing, um, a looped roadway, uh, which obviously adds a better access on Denham Road. It'll be good for, what Tony, Tony's major concerns was being able to loop the water, um, so this will make things a lot easier, a lot cleaner. Um, so the green area, the lighter green is, uh, the developed area, uh, this will all be within the existing field that's there, I don't know if you're familiar with the property, but there's, it's, it's an existing field up to the wood line. And then the rest of this will all be the open space. So, um, and then the other, the other, so you've got nine lots here and then you've got a common septic area that we will obviously have to get perk test on, we haven't gone that far yet, that'll be more towards the summertime. Um, when we get to a point when it's drier and can, you know, have a better chance of getting a perk out there. Um, but that's the, the, the idea is to do a shared septic system, just the sheer fact of trying to fit individual septic system on each lot, it just doesn't work well, um, with the requirements. Um, so this was, this is hopefully the idea, uh, the layout that we're going to be moving forward with. Um, this was designed on a fairly conservative perk rate of thirty minute, uh, twenty minutes an inch, which is the, the max, uh, actually, I'm sorry, it was twenty, I think the max is thirty in town, uh, for new construction. Um, it will be serviced by, by water, by town water, um, and the idea with these, uh, conservation subdivisions, like I believe, I looked at one that had been done off of, uh, it was known as Lily Aleen. Um, and they use what was called country drainage, um, I call country drainage with swales, uh, basically something just to try to slow down the water and give it a place to go and direct it. Um, so that would be similar to what we would be doing here, um, we won't know exactly what we're gonna do till we actually get a topography out here, just get some, um, soil tests going and kind of see what will be better suited for the property. Um, so we're not at that point yet, but this is kind of, um, we take a good start and, uh, just wanted to, again, I just wanted to see, um, what the board thought. If, you know, had any input, any concerns, uh, we'd be happy to hear it.
And you think those is gonna be affordable?
Uh, no.
No. I have, excuse me, I have a few.
Of course.
What we're seeing is the plan for the conservation subdivision.
That's correct.
Those are the smaller lots, were they ten thousand or less, probably?
Done, they're seventy-five hundred or less, yep.
Okay.
Or, or more, I'm sorry.
Okay, now, you know, you have to show us a conventional subdivision.
Yes.
You got that? You got to fit eight houses on there or whatever you don't.
It'll fit nine houses, it has a lot of wetland crossings, um, but it has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So you would never build this, but the idea is, and it all says is that you have to prove that you can fit, uh, fit that requi- make that requirement work, this is something we would work out in the design process. Um, but we feel confident that we can get the nine lots there conventionally. That's with the, that's with the forty, I believe it's the thirty thousand square foot lots with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, um, that, that.
Thirty-five, thirty-five.
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I apologize, thirty-five thousand.
I don't think you'd get a road down there. Yeah?
You could, you absolutely, you would have to cross the wetland.
Yeah.
Yes, you absolutely can, you, and you would have to replicate the wetland and, absolutely.
Now, you got some of the. Looks like they're built in the wetlands, is there gonna be enough room for a house?
Yes, no, no, they, they, definitely.
And, and a buffer from the, from the wetlands?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah, we, so you could put the house within that one hundred foot setback, uh, you just can't put the septic within it. Um, but we, I did all the, the setbacks to that and it all works.
Yeah, brilliant, oh, yeah.
Yeah, there was a, there was one about a girl that got taken in, uh.
Springfield.
Springfield, yeah.
Yeah.
It's approximately twelve acres of conservation land. It was about three and a half acres of.
What?
Of, uh.
Yeah, the whole, the entire lot.
Subdivision's gonna take up about three and a half acres.
The entire lot, uh, just to give you an idea, the entire property is fif- just, is fifteen point oh three acres, so just about, just over fifteen acres. Um, and the open space that we're providing is just over ten acres, so we're only utilizing a little less than five acres. Um, the requirement is, is that you need a minimum of twenty percent to be provided for open space. Uh, we're providing much more than that, and then the requirement is, is that you have to provide, of that twenty percent, you have to provide seventy-five has to be upland, we're much more than that.
Which. Quite more than.
Correct. Correct.
The green is wetlands?
Is the wetlands, correct.
And you're gonna give all this to conservation?
That's correct, that's the idea. And that's the next step, that's the next step, is we have to go talk to the.
Conservation.
Conservation, absolutely.
Just looks like more than twenty-five percent is wetlands over there.
But, no, but that's up to the required open space, so they're, they're, you're absolutely right, it's about fifty percent of this, but what we're actually providing is much more, actually I have the calculation right here.
I get you.
I have it right over here, there, there's much more open space we're provided, um, and much more upland area provided than what was required under the open space requirement. So if you take the entire fifteen acres, you take twenty percent of that and you get, uh, actually I'll tell you the numbers right here, uh, it's a hundred and thirty thir- a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Okay, so it's just over four acres. Um, if you take that number and you multiply that times point seven five, you are required to have ninety-eight thousand square feet of upland area within that open space.
Correct.
Okay, we're providing two hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four square feet of upland in the open space area.
Okay.
So we're, we're, I, I agree that ratio wise, it doesn't meet it by eye, but it does.
Is this lot, uh, is it only residential?
Yes, it is.
And the note says residential and agricultural.
Uh, that might, that might be an error.
It's a mixed shoes, but the, the underlying district is residential.
Residential, okay.
Okay. Cause we had one come in and it wasn't all residential, I was like, no, that don't work.
Yeah, this one is just an overlay.
Yeah, cause the bylaw states, it's a minimum of twenty percent of the posses shown in the development plan shall be contiguous open space excluding required yards and buffer areas. Such open space may be separated by the road or roads constructed within the conservation subdivision and not more than twenty percent of such open space shall be wetlands as defined pursuant to. Master of Law, chapter one thirty-one, section forty, so you've, just by looking at your calculations, it's gonna be more in above that, so.
That's correct.
Have you seen this plan before today?
No.
You ever seen it, right?
No, but I mean, it's, I mean. I, i- i- the, the purpose for him to submit the information as per the zoning regulations and, I mean, uh, you're not talking a lot of houses out there.
No.
Um, I don't know what site distances are, but I think William Street is generally open, I don't know what this area.
Yeah, it is, there's a little bit of a hill, but the hill, I believe, Mr. Robert, is south of you, right, south of that property. Um, so that's what it's, bro, it's, uh, Joey King's house.
Correct. Yeah, site distance will not be an issue on this property.
Oh, you're using only half of Audrey on that plan?
I don't think so. Did you use it all?
No, um, as far as the length, as far as what we own.
No.
Well, when it was.
They proposed, but.
When the town gave it up, uh, the abiders each got half of Audrey Lane. So that would be another concern, I think, I believe you can only go half over, but you got pl- you got plenty of room.
Got plenty of room.
We, we can absolutely shift this down.
Right, exactly.
If that becomes an issue, that's not a problem. We haven't, again, we haven't gone, we did the survey, um, but we haven't gone that far into it, again, we're trying to, we tried to get to a point where we could come in for discussion and, uh, you know, see what the board thought. We get, when we get into more of a definitive design, those are the things that will be, uh, worked out, but that's a, that's a, a very, very good point.
What are you doing for stormwater?
Um, so the, from what I remember, um, the majority of the site, this is the high point at the road and everything slopes down to the wetland. Um, so most likely it's gonna be some sort of swales along the side of the road, uh, with, uh, piping in the back and probably something in the back here. Um, that was one of my questions, that I, it doesn't specifically say, I don't believe, I didn't see anything in the bylaw that says anything about. Being able to put your stormwater controls within that open space area. Um, I don't know if the board is familiar with one that had or has not, or what the, what the thoughts are, because obviously that will remain an open space area. Um, we could definitely fit something in the rear here.
Who are you letting us?
It's with this, I believe there is.
Yeah, it's in the open space area. Who are you?
I mean, it's a good use far, it's just, I, I, again, that's, that would be the ideal, is this is the low area in the back here, I see it as almost like elongated, uh, detention ba- detention basin that's capturing the majority of the water. Um, and treating it and then discharging out.
And this wetland area that he's showing isn't swamp, well, you can walk in it today.
Yeah.
You know, and you're not gonna be having, you have hit boots on if you walk through it, I mean, it's, it's considered wetland because of the soil.
It's just wetland.
Soil and vegetation.
Yeah, soil and vegetation, but it's not standing water that, you know, like people, well, that's wetland, you know, it's not a swamp.
No.
No scum cabbage?
Nope.
How far, how far do you sign out of there? Does this run down, does this run down to the back of the dyed woods, that property? Or does it go that far, stop halfway, stops about halfway, right?
Somewhere. Yeah, somewhere.
Okay.
It doesn't go to that much.
Yeah, I don't think it does, okay.
Personally, I like sub- uh, conservation subdivisions, um, you know, that's, uh, a low impact.
Yes.
Uh, you know, so.
Preliminary looks good, um, it's for what I look at, but I just want to just go to this one point, um, to Mr. Robert that is in the, in the bylaws, and I think Mr. Woods is gonna touch on that. Cause there is a sentence in the bylaws that states that, um, it's under purpose of the forty-three ten, if you go down, it says that, um, in public services in a more economical and efficient manner. And to promote the development of housing affordable to low and moderate income families, so. You, um, it's, it's in the bylaws, so, you know, you're gonna build nine houses, if, I don't know what the requirement would be, you're to build, um, you know, twenty percent of those nine is affordable or low income, um. We have to look into that with our attorneys, but, um, you know, it is in the bylaw and it should be something to look at because there, there are a lot of people out there that don't even have too neat housing, you know, so.
It's not, it's not a forty, is it?
I understand that, I understand that.
Also, on, on a regular subdivision, you would have to show that every lot would have perks as well, am I correct?
I think it should, it may state that in the, I did check that.
In the bylaw.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, you have to show that you should have perks on, uh, conventional layout, I believe, is it there?
It does say that.
Yeah.
Like, I, I, I don't, I'm assuming that, but.
Thanks for coming, Tom.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, Tom.
Have a good night, Tom.
And it's really not a big deal, as long as they perk and that's what the rules call for, try to get the perks. You can show the perks, you can show the, that you can put a regular subdivision with that many lots, it, the law is the law. That should, uh.
And we, and we know we have, we absolutely know we have to perk out there either way, it's just, we're, and we're not at that point yet. We, when, uh, uh, Tony had come to me with this about in the, you know, later fall, uh, it just wasn't the time to do it, and we were at a point where we needed to do the wetland delineation in the survey, still.
See, right now out there on William Street, we have a lot that's already been perked, n- formerly a lot, but.
Okay. Yeah.
I thought it would be more per.
I've never heard each lot needs to be perked, but.
I have, I, I just, I swear I read, I was skimming through that, I saw something about perks per lot.
I don't know if it's, like, the, a town or it's the, the, the state.
Is that in the conservation?
Huh?
No, it's in the, uh, somewhere, you know what I mean?
True. I think a certain amount of test tricks gotta be done.
Has to be, yeah.
Um. The border health can tell you.
Well, we should be able to.
Conservation, yeah.
We should be able to tell.
Last one, we got Peter.
Peter. What page is it?
Forty-three thirty-one, page thirty-five, maybe?
Forty-three, forty-three hundred is, uh, conservation, uh, section.
Such plan shall indicate proposed topography, wetland, and unless the development is to be sued, one per acre. One per acre. Test rates of one per acre, but in no case fewer than four. Perca conservation subdivision.
Is that under the conventional portion or the other conservation portion?
Conservation, yeah.
So.
So.
I guess it depends on how you interpret that.
And unless the development is to be sued, the results of deep soil test pits and percolation tests at the rate of one per acre, but in no case fewer than four.
Oh, it says for a, it says. Are we doing? Requirements for a pre- a preliminary subdivision plan under the subdivision rules and regulations, with such plan shall indicate proposed topography, wetlands, and unless the development is to be sued. The results of deep soil test pits and percolation tests at the rate of one per acre, but in no case fewer than four. So you need one. So to me, yeah. Test bit, per acre. One per acre. Of the subdivision plan, I mean, the, uh.
So, but it's fifteen acres, so is that saying, but that's a, a wetland included, so.
I mean, it's only within your buildable area, if I'm correct with that.
So that's, so there'd be five, we're gonna be doing more than that anyway.
Yeah.
Just to be Title Five requirements for us, for the common system, so.
Oh, they should be good.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that guy.
Is that good or bad?
That's a good thing.
But we would, you know, we would expect it to be out throughout the subdivision in that place to show that, you know, the whole area.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
Only conventional subdivision, that's where we'd have to be perked.
Yeah, throughout the.
That's not how long we.
Your conventional plan.
What would be the conventional subdivision?
Has to have at least four, you know, the one per acre spread out through the, the buildable areas of that subdivision.
Okay.
Not the conservation subdivision, the.
Sh- so if there's, so let's say, I think there's.
I think it's the entire parcel. So basically, if you turn the page, turn, turn back to the conventional subdivision, right? The entire part.
At least four, four lots.
Four per the entire parcel.
There's a perk that go up to here.
No less than. That's, that's my opinion, that's, that's the way I see that, yes. No less than.
That's where the bylaw reads, I thought also, if you were to flip all of it.
Turn that, turn that around.
We'd have to, you'd have to perk every single one of those lots.
That's, that's my interpretation.
That's, that's my interpretation.
I don't read it that way, no. No, I don't read it that way either.
I don't read it. How do you read it?
Yeah, we have to. That's before reading it, you have to do one for all the, for all the billable area, are you gonna do one, one per acre?
I'm gonna read it again. It's just like that thing you have to do.
So they're thirty, so it's, they're thirty-five thousand square foot lots, roughly, if some of them are larger, obviously. So, you're pro- about one per lot. Roughly, I, I guess, I guess that's.
Yeah. Where do you get the four then?
Well, four minimum for the, so, so we, we would have a minimum of nine.
It's four, four.
No case, no fewer than four.
We'd have a minimum of nine, from what I'm understanding, nine holes that would have to.
I think we'll, we'll get a legal opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
I have an idea.
So like, you know, we're kinda split now on interpretations, so, um, we'll get your legal opinion so you know the, you know.
Yeah.
Period, that's forty-three thirty-one, actually, the, in the middle of, uh, roughly.
Yeah.
Well, page thirty-one.
Page thirty-five or five.
Thirty-four, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty.
Thirty-four, thirty-five.
Page thirty-five with forty-three thirty-one. So you would, actually, you would need, the way I'm reading it, ten holes. A do test fit and a perk. Which is what you need to do anyway, so.
The only difference is if he was doing it for the conservation subdivision, he would be doing it all in the front. In this case, he has to do it throughout the entire parcel in order to do that, basically, in every one of those lots there, he would have to do a perk there in order to prove that he qualifies for a conservation subdivision. That's the way I see it, am I?
That's the interpretation I got out of it when I read that, yeah.
I do.
The idea is that you're not giving us a.
Is that what they're saying, it's nine?
I, I think it's nine, that's, that's my opinion, but.
Yeah.
I think that would be appropriate, yes, but, I mean, they, they don't want you giving up saying, we're not gonna develop this land, you knowing that it's not perkable, you know, and counting it as billable land for houses.
I like the concept, Mr. Roderick, I really do, I, I've been up there with you before, I was even on the board, I was on that property, on that parcel, I know the parcel, you can tell that one.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's a great.
It's got some walking trails in it now, you know, I, I'd like to turn it over to conservation to, you know, like, uh, broad cove park they made down there and people can hunt it, can, you know, have hot, you know, walking paths and.
Definitely no, not, not water down there.
What?
No, it's vegetation, like you said, it's.
Well, see, we can walk it right now, you know, as we speak, anybody can walk it, you know.
There's nothing, nothing wrong with that, I, I, I still don't think that, I, it's just not the way I read this, this thing here, that, that doesn't mean anything. Want to perk it in a park site, that's it.
Since we're, since we're kinda split on the interpretation of forty-three thirty-one, um. Is it best at this time that we go for, uh, legal advice, legal opinion?
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay, so, yes.
We'll see the best interest.
We'll get a legal opinion and whatever's better. Okay. Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions for me or at all?
No.
How do you know my daughter?
Uh, my daughter, my daughter's on her daughter's cheerleading, cheerleading.
Should you see, B C C's, keep them up on here.
Exactly, they're quick.
She's the team mom, so she's, she's the one.
Hey, she's in her forties now, I have no more control.
I'm gonna try to be active with the detention, with the infiltration, you know, try to be, uh, inventive with the, you know, the basin too, you know, that could be, you know.
I got it all set. When do you plan on coming back, Tom?
Of course.
Minimize the impact.
Probably June, July, you know.
Okay, take your time, Mike.
We, we know it'll perk, right?
That's the key.
Yeah.
And then once we do that, then we'll get into more survey, topo, if, I'm just trying to save money if we, I don't wanna go out there going crazy and, and not perk, that would not be good. We've spent a minimal, at least somewhat of a minimal amount of money at this point, not going too, too far ahead, so.
It's been flagged, you know, it's all been recorded, the flagging is all been recorded, so.
That's it. So, well, thank you, really appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you.
And, uh, you, what, and, uh, so as far as the, uh, legal opinion, I assume that Tony could find out from the board at some point as to what the findings work.
Yeah, sure, we'll have, we'll have, yeah, mail to you, contact us, so.
Just mail it to me, I'll.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it, man.
Rest out of the night.
The real fun begins.
Budget.
The budget.
No, that's easy.
Thanks, Tom.
Tim, are you gonna be out?
Thanks, Mr. Williams, as always.
Thank you again.
I'll, I'll.
Yeah, Tom, you can make us part of the budget, right? Does it make us part of the budget, you're leaving?
You don't mind.
Two guys are better than that, can you just call me or email me anything?
That's a good one.
I'm gonna.
Email me, I get it twenty-four hours.
My, my flapper runs a lot better than my emails and texts, so.
Oh.
Come on, let's have a good night.
Stayed be here.
Will we be in touch about that punch list?
Thank you.
Uh, not where we could too, yeah.
Okay.
'Cause we're not really, but how about, it's not a draft that I give, you know.
That would be great, so I can get that sent over.
You know. Well, it's something Brian done to me now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Okay.
Yeah, on a budget period, I was doing a little bit of legwork.
Oh, yeah?
And I'm trying to create ours, um. Karen told me you put in whatever you want, which I think, uh, is a little high, 'cause, but I'm finding that
With fear.
some, some people have a two and a half percent. And I don't think that's unreasonable. Um, the clerical union contract is up, so we don't know what they're gonna get.
Contract. We don't know what they're.
But I think two point five on salaries is not, um, an unrealistic number.
So you want me to change it from two percent to two point five?
Unless the guys want it higher. What, I mean, what, they don't know what the union's getting?
No.
They haven't started negotiations yet.
Okay, so you're, so you're in the last year of the contract then, right?
We're waiting on the. Correct, that expires June thirtieth.
Yeah.
Anybody, um, well, past practice has always been, um, I always feel this, that I think we're better off with a higher percentage of increase, 'cause they can always talk us down when we go to town meeting, but you can always, you can never go up, but you can always go down.
Well, in front of the finance committee, they gotta work it up before town meeting.
I think, I think the highway got a, uh, uh, three, two and a half and two and a half or something like that.
I know one year they had a three.
Two and a half.
Yeah, something like that.
I make the motion for two and a half.
I'll second your motion for two and a half.
Two and a half, please.
Well, I'm gonna ask for a vote. Any more discussion? Okay, motion is made to set the salary increase at two and a half percent uh, per year, is there any further discussion? Seeing none or all in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, okay, that, it's, it's what it is. We'll be setting.
And that's, I'm, I'm sorry, that's for both your stipends as well, right?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Everybody gets a salary.
Yeah.
Okay.
Special article.
Just to clarify for.
Does anybody know when the finance committee starts meeting again?
It was not mentioned as more than, as well, I didn't know, no, it wasn't mentioned.
Yeah.
No?
So just so you know, for surfeits assessment, I gave them a call, they haven't had their yearly, or their annual meeting yet to vote the, um, hour assessment, uh, the most they can do is two and a half percent, so what I did right now is propose the two and a half percent. Um, so that way, if they stay, it's not a big deal if we go down, if that makes sense. Uh, we did the same thing last year, was we, we budgeted with the two and a half percent, and actually, they did vote to approve that two and a half percent because it had been a number of years since they increased.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they weren't sure what they were gonna do this year, so I just, I went high, um, with the maximum amount, so that way, if they come in at something lower, we're okay, we're covered on that part. Everything else is pretty much the same, um, looking at the numbers of what we have remaining in our budget, we really have nothing to to adjust, so I think we're right on track, um.
Unless anybody can think of any, of anything that we might wanna add, another new line or?
Uh, I can't.
Do you use your phone a lot? Well, the office phone.
Mine. I use the office phone.
For the office?
I usually use my, you know, my cell phone when I'm out of the office, I'll check messages, the voicemail messages and check the emails, or even from my laptop at home, so.
Okay.
Nothing that's so extravagant that would warrant anything. I usually check it at, if I'm out, out of the office, I at a minimum, I'll do it twice a day, first thing in the morning and then right before we close, so in case there's any phone calls or anything to make, I make it.
The only others that I can think of is a, uh, a line for mileage if we're out and about going up and doing inspections, but you can't get mileage for anything in town.
We don't live in Dayton, no.
Right. So.
Yeah. That won't work.
Okay.
All right. So other than the correction for that increase, do you wanna make a vote to approve the rest of the budget so I can get that, um, submitted?
Sure.
Yeah, making motions, um, to approve the F Y twenty-one budget for the planning board.
Second.
Yeah, motion made in second to approve the F Y twenty-one budget, adding in the two point five salary increase, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, okay, that carries. Uh, external business number four D, we're gonna discuss that.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, one more, we have the budget proposal, uh, the special article.
Oh, yes, uh.
For our plan copier.
Uh, yeah.
So I prepared the, um, in anticipation of you guys wanting to go for that again, we'll try, I guess third time's a charm. I did request a revised, um, quote, um, from last year. Um, everything, it all stayed the same with the exception of the service contract, um, that went up, um, which isn't surprising, but the, the machine itself stayed the same. And so what I did was in light of that service contract going up, uh, so last year when we got the quote, it was eighty-seven fifty per month and now it's bumped up to a hundred and five per month. Um, so I did request an a- another five hundred dollars so that the special article, if approved, it will cover, um, the installation, the purchase and the service coverage for that entire year. Um, and then I did a little extra for, um, supplies, I don't anticipate on using, 'cause I don't anticipate actually printing plans, it's our thought is, it's more to scan and be able to create PDFs so we can email them out to the various departments. So I don't see a lot of printing going on, but printing is very expensive, so that could send us over really quick and we have someone coming in.
Yeah. It is one thing, I, you're right, I, I think they should probably, uh, share the expense of printing.
Yes, and actually, when, last year, when I requested this quote, um, and it's the same thing, this, um, machine will have a certain like code, I can set it up for various different departments, and so then that will give me a breakdown of costs.
Okay.
So then I'll be able to bill or just, you know.
Right, I don't.
They should have.
Or transfer money, I could, yeah, I can invoice them, um, on that, on any prints that they might make.
Yeah.
Um, so just so you know, I did go up five hundred dollars on that, just to, for that buffer, for that service contract and for, um, an extra set of supplies to have on hand. So if you wanna make a motion, if you wanna go for that.
Make a motion to approve the special article.
Oh, I'm making motion to approve the special article for submission to the annual town meeting for the purchase of a plan copier slash scanner for the planning department.
Second.
Yeah, motion made and seconding to approve the special article for, uh, ten thousand five hundred, for a printer, all favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Post, all right.
Okay.
We're down to item four D, we're discussing that resignation of chairman, and I wrote a note today, um. Gentlemen, this April will be the end of my five-year term with the board, as a much consideration, I have decided not to seek another five-year term. Also, at the end of tonight's meeting, I am stepping down as chairman, so the board can reorganize if they choose to do so at this time. Since there are only five meetings left to the election, I thought this would be in the best interest, best interest of the board in order to ensure smooth transition to a new chair, vice chair and clerk. I wish you all the best in the future, sincerely, Thomas. I will be finishing my term in April, as I said, I will be moving on. Um, whoever for the next five meetings fills in a chair, uh, I'm available to help if help is necessary. If, uh, you know, and whatever the board needs, I'm still there, five more meetings, so, that's it.
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Tim, whoops.
Sorry, first, we need to accept his resignation.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I made that a formal motion to, um, accept, uh, Mr. Thomas Pius' resignation letter to the planning board.
I second.
Yeah, motion made in second, all favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, close, okay.
I just, I just wanna say this, I, I've only been here since last April and, um, I know all you gentlemen anyway, okay? But, um, in regards to Tom, I just wanna say this, I, I do mean this wholeheartedly to it, Tom, it's, you know, w- we is, we sit here as a board, we're bringing individuals because we wanna give back to our town, okay, it's not because of financials, um, advantages or anything like that, and, um, people that do things that we do, uh, need to be recognized for the work that we've done through the years. Now, you've not only been on the planning board, you're sure there's a board select, remember the board of select, now you're back in the planning board and now here you are as chairman of the board of health. So, I know you're still gonna be busy in town, I appreciate what you do for us as residents on a daily basis, and I'm sure there are many others out there that do also, so that's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah, thanks.
That's very well, thank you very much.
I think it's on point, thank you. I, um.
A lot more than I can.
You know, if I didn't think, and I'm sure there's a lot of talent on this board, and I have the utmost respect and confidence in, in this board moving forward, so, um. I guess the, the biggest reason, if I did another five-year term, as Woody said, I would be an old man at the end. I would be seventy-seven years old and I just don't picture myself, uh, you know, picking up another five-year term at age seventy-two, so. Uh, it's been a pleasure, except for you. No, all right, the feeling's mutual.
Yeah, I'll talk, thank you.
Okay, with all that being said.
You wanna reorganize?
Yeah, with all that being said, I would like to thank Tom for his service to the planning board, and I would also make a motion to make Tom the vice chair to help Tim with the transition for the remainder of our term until the next election. And whoever the clerk is now can stay the clerk until our next election, because that's coming in April and then we're gonna have to reorganize anyway.
Yeah.
So, with that being said, I'll make that follow-up motion in a second.
I will accept the position as chair of the planning board, gentlemen, I thank you very much for, uh, your, uh.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Tom, thank you, thank you, I, I started a little bit there, I'm not, I don't have the words like, uh, somebody here does, so, I, I, I
Tom, you're the best, yeah.
I do.
So you're the clerk, yeah. Yeah, no, I, uh.
I honestly appreciate everything that you've done.
I, uh, I have to say that. I uh I have to say that uh Tim runs a great meeting I was with him on the uh one more we want to do.
CPC.
CPC yes uh hard worker and a lot of confidence so I think everything will be just fine so.
Thanks Tim I appreciate that um with that being said um I'm going to um we're gonna leave status quo with the clerk and um.
Yes he is. Did we vote on the?
What's that?
His mo- their motion.
Did we vote on that motion?
Yeah.
We we motioned we didn't get all As the As.
So yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
At this time I am going to do uh motion's been made in second any further discussion on the topic here we none of us vote all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed that motion carries. At this time uh gentlemen I I thank you for uh putting your confidence in me um I will now let down the voters of the town of Dayton I work for you and remember that I work for you the residents of this town um with that being said I'd like to see more um young people be involved as you look at the many boards that are in town there's the compositions um there are a lot of a lot of this old folk and I'll put myself in that category too but I'd like to see the younger generation step up because sooner or later we're not gonna be able to do this anymore so it's time for somebody else to move it. So with that being said I'm going to entertain a motion and move to uh agenda item number five the approval of the meeting minutes of December eighteenth of twenty eighteen.
Move to accept the minutes meeting minutes of December eighteenth.
Motion's been made well here is second second any further discussion here we none of us vote all in favor say aye.
Second. Aye.
Aye all opposed that motion carries um we have um no correspondence for this month?
No.
We have no correspondence um with that being said we have no public input. Um. I just um through public input I just wanna say this that um I've gone out on some inspections and um I've discussed this with the former chair was not the vice that um and also administrative assistant the topic was brought up today we do inspection we do swatch we do site visits uh we need to be identified as such that people know who we are and uh the administrative assistant I believe is gonna contact the fire chief uh they have um all the equipment to do uh badges as they do for the board of health if anyone comes to your home who's working for say National Grid they have badges they identify themselves I think we should have the same identities so that way people know who we are we call on their properties and there's no disputes we don't have the police department show up so our administrative assistant is gonna work on that for us so we just have to get um an opportunity gentlemen to uh make arrangements after this is done to uh go down to the fire station or possibly the library to get a passport photo taken and then that can be taken care of so um.
Great idea.
Across the board do um any of the members have anything else they'd like to add before um I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I do not sir.
Um just to recap our administrative assistant will be in touch with Mister Touch and um it will go through um the deficiencies that this board has found and also the residents of Cedar Estates in Washington Heights and information we've provided that that'll be worked on and sent out um I wanted my hat's off to our administrative assistant um she does fabulous work for us on a daily basis and we greatly appreciate that as a board so yes we did make it.
Appreciate that thank you.
So with that being said I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Any further discussion in these seconds I entertain.
Okay I made the I made the motion.
Okay.
Okay you made the wrong yeah that's great you can't do the motions anymore.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh that's right.
Yeah I always yeah the chairman can't even make the motion but you you always have the wording as I'll entertain it which means we will.
See. So we can say goodbye to cable.
Yeah so cable thank you very much have a great evening you're adjourned.
Thank you.